Let me know if my head is anywhere near the...
Yeah.
I presume it is.
I'm gonna try to sit back a little bit. I mean to, you know.
No problem.
Give you access space there. I know I forgot about the video component. It's like all of a sudden I got the flutters over there. Yeah. Okay. Are we recording?
We're recording.
Awesome. Go ahead.
Well, thanks for coming in today.
Thanks for inviting us.
We will start the process with just an easy introduction. If you start here and go around, if you want to just tell us why you're running and, you know, what your motivation is.
Sure, absolutely. My name is Melissa Barnes Delacchia, and I am running for Zone Six, the out-large seat for the Bend-Lapine School Board of Directors, otherwise known as Administrative School District One. I am a lifetime educator. I served as a public school teacher, principal, administrator on a board of directors and on school site council. And currently, I have my own practice where I coach principals and I advise superintendents and CEOs of small districts. What I'd like to do is be able to bring that experience to our local public school system and be able to do that work in my own backyard. I have two, I'm deeply invested in that I have two children in Bend-Lapine. My son attends fourth grade at High Lakes, and I serve on the school site council there. I actually just had my meeting yesterday. And then I have a daughter who is in 10th grade and attends Summit High School and attended Realm's Middle School. So I've seen also the different types of education programs that Bend-Lapine offers our students. I'm excited to do this work, and I'm sure we'll get into it, but the four things that I really believe in and that I'm running my platform on, our agency, that we really need to make sure that our students are developing the knowledge, the skills, and the mindsets that give them choice in their futures, and that we are empowering our educators to actually have agency with their practice. Two, belonging, that everybody, all of our stakeholders, our students, our families, and our teachers and educators, site leaders, are celebrated for the diverse assets that they bring. Third is equity. I believe that we need to work harder, especially as our school system is changing, to make sure that all kids, especially those furthest from opportunity, are able to succeed. And then fourth, financial stability. I believe in really strong financial planning, fiscal policies, and maintaining a strong reserve that helps us maintain our system, not just for this generation of kids, but the generations to come. So I'm hoping to earn your endorsement.
Hi, Richard Azadorian, thanks for inviting me. Born and raised Fresno, California. BA and MA at Fresno State College in Educational Theory. Taught in the Fresno Unified School District for 30-plus years. Started out as elementary teacher, middle school counselor, high school counselor, and then subsequently, high school principal. Part of that time was interrupted when I served in the United States military for a few years in the Army. And honorable discharge. Got out and served in Coast Guard Reserve for a few years, honorably discharged. Wife was also a school administrator, and when she retired, we moved around a little bit, came to Bend, and established a home in the 90s. It was a vacation home. We now live here full-time, almost four years in the Sun River area. I've been a domestic violence counselor. I've been a CASA volunteer. Been a church youth organizer. I think I bring a lot of wisdom and experience to the board. I've served on the Contra Costa County Board of Education in Northern California. I was elected for four years. We oversaw over 22 school districts to a total of about 180,000 students with a residence of over a million residents. It was the fifth-largest county school in California of the 56 county schools. So I'm rolling up my sleeves, and I'd love to serve and also represent another part of the school district because I live in Sun River and I'm close to Lapine. And my wife is very active in the Latino community group, so we have that to offer as well. A passive baton of my life.
Thanks for doing this. I'm Mike Way. Let's rephrase that, I'm Dr. Mike Way. I taught for 33 years. Had no desire to do administration whatsoever, but I did teach mathematics and computer programming, computer science at the high school level, at the college level, and at the university level.
I'm sorry, University of where?
Pardon, University of South Florida on an adjunct basis.
Okay.
I have all my degrees are from University of South Florida. And it's a BS in math with education, MED with computer science and education, and a PhD with a lot of stuff. Just interdisciplinary studies is what they call it. Why do I want to do this? Because I taught for 33 years, and I think that there is always room for improvement. Incremental improvement, kaizen, the way the Japanese say it. There's always a chance to improve. It doesn't matter how good you are. You can make an improvement. And I think I have something to offer. I've got a lot of experience behind me. Worked with a lot of different kinds of kids. I currently am entering the first robotics team at Lapine High, and I helped start five teams down county, of which there are still three going on, four going on. And worked with Summit and their first robotics team. And they should be praised because they're at the world competition in Houston this weekend. I like to serve. We travel every summer. For nine of those summers, we did work camps where we would go into an Indian reservation and set up and rebuild houses and bring 400 kids in to sleep in a school. I did that for nine years. We traveled, been all over the country, not all over the world. I just, I enjoy service.
Thanks. Well, I think, you know, the voters are gonna have, first of all, a really tough decision, and also really lucky to have three really educated and experienced people in this race. That's really great. So I'm not gonna presume to know more about this than you, but I'd like you to just describe what you believe the role of a school board and a school board member is and how you fit into that. So why don't we start over here again with Mike?
The role of any board.
Sure. What does a school board do and how do you see yourself?
The role of any board is to make policy and to ensure that those policies are carried down. And you can't say the board does anything other than that because we don't create funding, we don't teach in a classroom, we don't manage the teachers, but we make policy to enable appropriate management, appropriate funding, appropriate classroom behavior, that kind of thing. And so that's, I can't say that as a board member, I'm going to walk in and sweep clean. That's not true. This just doesn't happen. I have ideas that I would like to implement, but that's gonna be a political process.
Thanks.
Well, the role of the board, there are seven of us. We can speak individually, but we make decisions in totality. And the decision of the board is a decision of the individual on the board. Our major function is to hire the best CEO we can find, the best superintendent. Secondly, we need to oversee the budget and see that the budget is being well-spent. That obviously falls under the purview of the superintendent's staff, but still, we have that oversight responsibility. Negotiation with employees. We don't interfere. There's a hierarchy. We don't interfere with individual school problems. As an example, a couple days ago, I had a parent, who knows I'm running, who called me and they have a student at Bend High, and she was very concerned about the open-period mandate where students leave the campus. Well, she didn't have the full story. I called the principal, which I wouldn't do if I was a board member. I go through our staff at the central office, but I'm a free citizen right now. And the principal called me back right away, and he was great. And he explained the open-period situation. Obviously, the parent was misinformed. I got ahold of them, and I said, "This is what the policy is." So in a nutshell, that's pretty much what the board is. Mike says, "Policy." We obviously establish policy and we follow that protocol. Thank you.
So ultimately, the board is responsible for, as Richard was stating, hiring the CEO and overseeing that CEO. Bend-Lapine School Board operates as a policy board, and so it has a set of policies that it has set up that provide limitations for the CEO. And what the board is responsible for is making sure that our CEO, our superintendent, is working within those policies that have been set up and those limitations, and that he is not exceeding them, so he's living up to those. In terms of that work with the CEO and with my fellow school board members, I think there's two big pieces. One is thought partnership, and that's thought partnership with our administrative staff and with our superintendent and amongst each other. One great example of this is Julie Craig's work around start times. Our district is shifting start times. That was something she was passionate about. She brought thought partnership. Additional board members had to engage. Our whole community engaged, but that was a big change that was brought about by a board member. I think moving into our next big piece in terms of this new slate and having three or four new board members, I've heard everybody talk. There's a lot of momentum around mental health. We've been doing some work around Better Together and that partnership, but I would see opportunities for board members to work with our CEO and to really be pushing towards stronger mental health services because I hear that as something that my fellow candidates for the board have been talking about. So thought partnership across the board and with our CEO. And then it's the financial management. We have the financial and organizational management. We have, and I serve on two school boards right now. They are not elected, they are appointed or elected by the fellow board members, but I serve on the Board of One Purpose School in the Bayview-Hemers Point neighborhood of San Francisco, and I serve on Lighthouse Community Public Schools Board, which operates two K-12 schools in East Oakland. And that was a school district I helped found. In that board member role, we have the primary responsibility for both the fiduciary pieces of the organization and making sure that we're making strong budget, budgetary decisions. We also have to work on governance and on accountability. And so really making sure that we have organizational strength and that we're in compliance. That's actually one of the things I work on a lot with small school districts in my private practice is really working on accountability and compliance.
Richard, why don't we start this question with you, to be fair? So grad rates went up last year, but they're still low compared to the rest of the nation. How do you plan to help educators increase graduation rates in the district?
Well, low is an understatement. 49th in the United States. The graduation rate in Bend-Lapine varies from high school to high school. Lapine High School, Mountain View, Bend High, but the stat is around 78%, which I think we all agree is very low and nothing to be proud of. That means, now, what happened was this last year, there was a couple percent rise, which meant that about 600 and something students would be graduating in a few years because of that. How would I attack it? Again, as a single board member or as a board, we don't, we establish a policy and tells the superintendent, "We need to do better." Now, how that better is, is what programs are there out there? Are the underserved, the homeless, the minorities, the foster kids? Are they being included? What programs do we have? If we don't have a program we're satisfied with, let's look beyond our borders, let's look beyond our state. Let's go to California. Let's look at where I grew up and see what programs are being positive and showing results. As oversight, when I was on the Bend, I mean, on the Contra Costa Board, many of our schools were rated at 90, 92%. Why? They attacked things like in the ninth grade, if students were failing two classes, you know, that was a red light. What did we do to address those kids? You know, Madras sunk the ship on graduation rates, including their Indian population. And they did that because they did early intervention. They had kids involved in extracurricular activities and school activities beyond the core subjects. Those are things we need to look at.
Okay. Dr. Way?
We throw this number out a lot. I'll learn number 49 out of 50. I've not ever seen that number except maybe in the bulletins editorial pages. When that surfaced, I went online to try to find it. And apparently, there's some study that ranks everything. But I went online, and I wound up looking at page after page after page of how each state ranked in certain subjects and certain subjects. And it turns out, we really rank in the middle or above in most everything, it's the graduation rate specifically. Okay? So what do we do? We don't attack. We enrich. We enhance to those things which are important to the students. There are certain things that, you know, we have a guarantee that we have to produce. We have to produce people that can add and subtract and write a check, can write letters. Those things are important, communicate. And of course, we're not gonna say write letters anymore, but they can write good emails, not using too many emojis. But those are the kinds of things we have to produce. Now, are we producing everybody to go to college? If you say yes, I would say why? It's that simple. We're producing students, number one, to be successful in their world. And their worlds vary. They vary so much from living in a school bus in the dead of winter in the Deschutes National Forest to living on Aubrey Butte. Do we treat all those kids the same? No, we can't. There's no possible way we can treat them the same. What we can address, though, is their outlook and their understanding of the future because most of them, and I think this has become a problem particularly in South County, that they don't see a future beyond chopping trees and banging nails. They don't see the opportunities. And I say that because I've had those robotics teams down there. And it's like pulling teeth to get kids to come out and play the Legos or the more sophisticated stuff. They just, they'd rather go to the golf coach. They'd rather go to the cross-country coach. They would not rather get their hands dirty with robots. And what's the future, guys? Technology. We can't get away from it. You're not gonna ever, ever, ever get away from it. It's gonna be there, and it's gonna increase and increase and increase and increase. And we have to make the kids and their parents understand that it's a future we've got to march to, not stay here and wait for it to come to us. We've gotta approach it.
So yesterday or the day before, OPD actually put out an article on this, and they had the entire plan for how Oregon would like to address the graduation rate, and they went through what's actually funded. And of the dozen or so initiatives that they've already identified for how we address the graduation rate, three are currently funded. So starting at the bottom of my four priorities, the finance.
So is this at the state level?
At the state level. And so looking at that, we have to start looking at our funding. I talk about locus of control, and like, I need to focus on what we have and what we can do here, but I would be remiss not mentioning that we're not fully funding a program that we already have in place for serving our kids better. Some of the things that we are already doing, we're starting to get into SEL work and social-emotional learning. We're starting to work on restorative practices that help us keep our kids in school and not push them out. We're starting to work on expanding our enrichment activities in our schools so that our kids have something that they can explore that helps them find passion and purpose in their lives and makes them want to stay for the rest of the school day. We have pockets in our high schools of opportunities where the learning is actually connected to the world so that our kids are getting access and exposure to those opportunities that they don't know. And a lot of our kids, we're not talking first-generation college-going. We're talking first-generation high school graduates. And so if you don't have a sense of those opportunities that are out there and our school system doesn't provide them, it's really hard to develop a mindset that, yeah, I'm gonna go through high school, and now I'm gonna explore. And so examples, several of our schools are using Project Lead the Way in their science curriculum, and have shifted to that. That is a science, a next-generation science program that embeds those standards into real-life experiences where, for example, my daughter next year, instead of taking the traditional physics class, is gonna take a biomedical class where she examines real science within a simulation. We have things like the Realm's High School that started. So we're incubating these ideas of how do we have more connected learning that helps our kids see, "Why am I still in high school? And what are the careers out there and the opportunities out there? What are the authentic applications out there for what I'm learning here that pushes me through to that high school piece?" We can expand those. I don't think we have enough, but I'm excited of the work that we've done so far. But it doesn't, if you start, if you start that work around career exploration in high school, you've already lost. It has to start earlier, and that was one of the key findings in the OPD article, was that until we start pushing that down to middle school and being able to think about our middle school programming, and I would argue it starts at five, like, it starts with kindergarten, and that we are having experiences in our classroom where kids are learning, and what they're learning is constantly brought back to what are experts and people who actually make a living doing what you're learning, and what are those careers out there? So that from a very early age, they're constantly exploring passions, purposes, and pathways in their life. And I feel like when they have that purpose, they're able to get to the high school and high school finish line, and then whatever else is in store for them, whether it be vocational education, straight into a career, or college.
May I just add?
Sure.
The graduation problem starts in the third grade. If they're not in reading and math level in the third grade, particularly reading, the chances of their dropping out or not graduating, the percentage goes way up. So a lot of our efforts need to be put, as she said, lower grades, kindergarten, but third grade is the benchmark, believe it or not. And when a kid gets in the middle school, if they failed at least two classes, the chances of non-graduating are almost 100%, unless there's intervention.
Thanks. Yeah, I didn't, we didn't mention this at first, but if after everyone's had a chance to answer a question, you wish to add anything, you're welcome to do that. So, Melissa, we talked, we started getting, you know, edging around the topic of funding. So each district is gonna continue to face the conundrum of covering PERS costs versus the need to hire more teachers and staff for growing districts. How do you all see yourselves managing that issue? Any volunteers to take this one first?
PERS is like Jonah visiting the whale. I don't think that, we can't as a board do anything about PERS. So if our funding is inadequate, we're gonna have to look for some other place to fund.
Right, and so I guess the underlying question there is, what are the, you know, the places that you can see needing to cut the budget in order to pay for teachers? I mean, where, you know?
I hate to see the budget cut any farther because I know teachers, let's talk about a middle school teacher, language arts, right? Four classes, four preps. That's insane. That is absolutely insane. Do we need more teachers? Yeah, but the numbers are not big enough at that particular school to say we can have another teacher. But can we have a half-teacher? Part of the day there and part of the day here? Sure we could. That's, those are possibilities. We tend to think in classroom teacher units, and that's not necessarily correct. It turns out, when you talk about class sizes and that kind of thing, it turns out to be not so much, it's class size certainly, but it's also the number of adults in the room. If there's one teacher and one aide, things improve. It's that simple. And that's the research on class sizes with, yeah, I don't wanna, you know, mention any competitors or anything, but they published an editorial almost three, four months ago on, "Don't do class sizes, they're too expensive," pretty much. And it bothered me because I knew the research on it because I helped, you know, I studied. And I said, "I went online, and I said, 'You know, where'd this article come from?'" "Okay, from the Washington Post." "What's the basis for it?" "Some professor in New Zealand." Now, in New Zealand, class sizes might not work. I don't know. But here, class sizes work. It's a given.
When you say "class sizes," "don't do class sizes," you mean, "Don't look at a number when you're trying to talk about budgets?"
Don't look at a number. Let me just take, for example, three girls, K-8. Well, you know, think about that. You got, what, eight grades, nine grades? 300 students? What hurts? You got 300 students, you run for the spreadsheet, you get, "Oh, this many teachers." You know, that doesn't balance. It doesn't balance. They have a middle school portion. Should they have a middle school guidance counselor? I think so. They don't. They don't have no health counselors, that kind of thing. Because spreadsheet says 300, this is what you get. We've got to look around, have smaller schools, need more buffering, bunkering. Bunkering, buffering's wrong. Bunkering, I like that better. But a large school, I can go to Summit. You know, you can get away with that at Summit because they've got, what, 22, I don't know, how many, 2100 students? Yeah, I divide 30 into 2100, I get 70 teachers. I divide 30 into 300, I get 10. Something wrong with those pictures. I would rather have a lot more in the 300 school than 70, 75 teachers in a 2100-student school because those packages are almost self-driving. The larger the school, the more self-driving it is. And I say that because I've worked in large schools and small schools. I see that the programs are self-driving. When I put in an AP class, and I filter the first batch of kids through the AP class, and I say, "Well, that's not so bad, and look what, I got three hours of credit." All of a sudden, I've got more kids there. But I can't go South County and successfully put in an AP class because I might not have enough kids to run it, to be in it.
Let me try to bring this back to PERS just because we really wanna get a firmer, a concept of where you guys lie on this. And let me just add to what Nicole had said earlier. You know, one of the roles that I see for a school board member is, although your budget is constrained, you're still viewed in the community as the experts, and you have an advocacy role. So in terms of PERS, when elections come around and we see county commissioners and state reps starting to campaign on this, you know, we look for school board members to weigh in on issues like that as the people who are bunkered in with, you know, all the kids and the teachers. So let me go back to you, Dr. Way, and let you weigh in from that perspective.
Okay, it's very serious. It's serious, the PERS is a problem. And if somebody comes up with a plan to help solve it, one way or another, and if it's a useful plan, then great, I'm all for it.
Do you see raising taxes as a path forward for solving the PERS problem?
You're putting me really on the spot.
I'm gonna do it to them too, so it's not personal.
Do I think that, I'm not, you know, I just paint... Do I think that, I, I'm not, you know, I just paid, finished my taxes last week, I maxed out my credit card, but I paid them. I'm not a fan of higher taxes, I'm not. Not, I would be a fan of higher taxes that I saw helping the shoots. I'm not so much a higher, fun of a higher taxes that helped Lake Oswego. They clearly don't need it, where we do. So if you're gonna come up with a plan on higher taxes, I would, you know, I would really go get in trouble here now. So I may or may not say anything at all.
It's fine, you can.
What I, I would, I would consider, if you're gonna tax the shoots, they shouldn't be taxed at the same high rate as Lake Oswego. Just say it like that.
Fair enough.
I'm also in favor of perhaps maybe a local option. I think that starts to make more and more sense.
Melissa? Sure. I appreciate the whale analogy. I, PERS is the single largest finance challenge that is facing all of our public systems and our public schools. In the next year to two years, just south of us in California, PERS is set to bankrupt San Jose Unified School District and Los Angeles Unified School District. They will become financially insoluble because of the growth of the PERS contribution within a limited budget. So you got this much money and it went from 15 to 22% over the last five years of their budgets. I mention that because I think that it is going to be a bit of a canary in the coal mine for districts that aren't quite as close to that insolvency to be able to say, no, actually, it's urgent enough and we have to do something now. There is a lot of work being done at the state level, and exploration done at the state level. I support people that are looking for PERS reform. I don't know what all of the answers are, but I do believe that it needs to be reformed. I believe that if we need a tax solution to increase funding for PERS, I would be in favor of that with conditions. And the big one that we're having conversations around right now with everything that's on the table is that it can't just go to fund the unfunded liabilities that we already have. It has to go into the reserve, and even what they're proposing right now, and they're calling it, they're saying that it's going into the unfunded, that it's for the reserve. In actuality, it feels like it's going more towards the liabilities we already have. And so what I would like to see...
When you say "they," is that, is that the governor's plan that they were showing up?
In the, in the plan that they are working on right now.
Okay, the governor or the legislature, legislature or both?
Both, going back and forth. And again, like, I am not, I am not an expert, this is where I'm like, I am gonna elect representatives for me to help tackle, tackle this, but as I under, but if I'm looking at the tax piece, we have to find a way that reforms it, that doesn't just raise taxes to continue to pay the PERS liabilities that we haven't funded, it, it has to shore up the system as a whole. I think that in terms of the staffing, which was the second half of your question, I feel like, and this is, this is complicated, because I don't wanna use the word empower, because like, having school sites that don't have enough money and then saying, we're gonna empower you to figure out the staffing plan, is like a really lame promise, right? Or a lame thing. But in school site council yesterday, when we were looking at High Lakes Elementary, where my, where my son goes, the teachers were thinking about that. And they were thinking about the fact that with the new elementary, it was less about purse, but it was about staffing. They're gonna lose about 100 kids to the new elementary, they're gonna lose staff positions. And the teachers had really great ideas that they're like, oh, I've already been talking to this teacher and here's how we could combine these two. In Richard's, instead of having music and PE, we could have IMM, which is Music in Motion. And they were coming up with solutions that I, as a board member over here supervising Shea, I don't know that solution, that the teachers on the ground are advocating for. So again, like, I don't wanna use empower, but I do think that we need to have more voice from our school sites when we're facing these problems, and allowing them to give us more input in terms of like, this is a hard time, and this is a crazy time, and absolutely, our schools deserve more funding, but we need, I think we need more voice from our stakeholders, and that includes our educators, but also our families and our students, of what they prioritize when we have to make cuts. And I'd taken a school through a recession before, and it was horrible, and I thought the reading interventionist was the person we needed to keep, and the teachers all said, no, we can, we can figure that out, we need the counselor, we need the mental health, because we're not trained in that. And so I just, PERS, yes, reform, and staffing, if we have to cut, we need to get more input from our stakeholders, in terms of what they prioritize.
Unfunded mandates are the bane of every school district and are close to bankrupting some. There's no getting around it. Governor Brown is trying to put together a $3 billion budget, and I think it's great as long as that money comes to schools and doesn't go to lower the PERS responsibility. And I think she's trying to do that, but she's being attacked on it. Lobbying, I'm big on lobbying. Sheri Held, former board member, now, as you know, in the state office, was great for Ben Lepine because she did go to Salem, which I would be willing to do. I have the time, I have the nerve, and I think I have the strength to go knock on doors, talk to legislators, because we take it for granted that in Salem, they know what's going on in Ben Lepine, but in most cases, they don't. We need to sit down with them, as we did in California, was on board there. Even when they had our state conferences, we would invite them to come, and in outbreak sessions, we'd sit down and say, look, do you realize, this is our staffing problem, this is our PERS problem, this is what we're having a problem sustaining our fine arts programs. And they would listen, they'd go, gee, I really didn't know that. So bottom line, I believe in reaching outside of our district and going to the state legislators, and in some cases even our federal, and educating them, alerting them. One of the things that the governor's trying to do is to put a cap on the kicker to about 100 bucks, which would bring, what, about 300 million, which I'm in favor of. That's it.
Okay. Chris, I know you had one, maybe since we're on the topic of Sheri, you wanted to bring up?
Which one was that? I don't remember.
Maybe it's not on here, just anything about the vaccinations?
Oh, right. I didn't have that. Yeah, that's obviously a big deal statewide, and not just statewide, but through the country. I'm just curious what you guys, how you guys feel about the vaccinations and the anti-vaxers, you have people that want to see everyone vaccinated, where do you guys?
I'll jump in on that, I'm all for it. I'm 100% of denying children access to school or public places if they haven't been vaccinated. Very dear friend of mine, who's a doctor from China, who lives here now, is a citizen, is absolutely against it. Why should the government tell us that what goes into our child's body is not our decision? Well, your decision isn't also endangering my child who has been vaccinated. So I think in cases of public safety, and it's in an epidemic portion, the government needs to step in and say, this is what has to happen, or we're endangering the innocent.
I've had every shot there is. Two for pneumonia, for heaven's sakes. But I would, the, the, all the measles shots, well, I didn't have the measles shots because I had the measles. And I wouldn't recommend anybody ever, ever, ever go through that. But I had one of the first Jonas Salk shots, I mean, that kind of thing. I, I don't understand the people with that attitude. I just really don't understand because...
What attitude?
The, oh, you're putting stuff into my kid's body that, you know, I need to control that. I'm not sure. You know, I don't know enough to say what's good and what's bad, but I know the effects of not doing it. And to think how many years we have gone without a case of measles, and then all of a sudden, there's 522 and growing? This is crazy. There's no excuse for that. There's really no excuse for that. If they wanna make that choice, then they need to make other choices, like homeschool, you know?
So you share Richard's view that they should be excluded from school without vaccinations?
I, I think that it's reasonable that they not endanger other children. And it's very obvious that vaccinations are endangering other people. And I know this was a huge thing at the board meeting last week. Yes, I missed that meeting completely, I forgot about it. You know, I knew it was bad, and I was told it was bad the next morning, but I just, you don't throw away something that's proven to work.
Melissa? Sure. It's a little complex. Yeah. So I definitely, as a parent, when, when I have my children, had heard about not, you know, the dangers, potential dangers of vaccinations. And I met with my pediatrician. And my pediatrician, who has a vast amount of medical knowledge, said, and his grandfather said, well, I gave them to my children and to my grandchildren. And I trusted him in that, in that time. That was 16 years ago. And I think the research around vaccinations continues to show that they're safe and that they do promote public health. And so I do believe that vaccinations and vaccinating our children is a priority of public safety, and it does, and it is something that should be an expectation in our public schools. It's really hard, because I have friends, close friends, and I have colleagues who do not believe in vaccinations, right? And the conversation that we have had is that my belief is that that is absolutely your choice as a parent. But as a public health issue, it also does come with other choices. And unless there's a reason with qualified exemption, that your child can't be vaccinated, because there are some kids that can't be, then it does involve other choices, like whether or not you're gonna attend your public school system. And that's, that's a really hard thing to say. And it is really a heated debate right now in our community. I do think that any, any policy needs to have crystal clear vac, crystal clear clarity, crystal clear clarity, on what those vaccinations are and what they are not and will not be. There's a lot of kind of, I would call it kind of false news, whether what's maximal, we're gonna have to have a flu vaccine, et cetera, and like, that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about measles, which, you know. And so we're talking about diseases that have been eradicated in the United States and are now coming back. And so I do think we need to have a clarity on what vaccinations we're talking about and what exceptions would be and wouldn't be acceptable. But ultimately, it's gonna be a parent's choice, but that choice for me is gonna come with other choices around whether or not you attend public school.
Great. I think we have time for one more question before we do a wrap.
Can I add one thing?
Yeah.
Because I just got asked this question by a colleague who does not vaccinate her children, and I said, I have no idea. That's something we're gonna have to look at together. But something I am interested in is how Ben Lepine approaches any of the online school programming for families who make that choice, to be able to school at home and access online classes, and whether those kids, because they were online only, could be exempted from a vaccination piece, but still be supported by the Ben Lepine schools. I don't know, I don't have that answer. But I think like those kinds of creative solutions that make this decision less hard for families whose heart is with not vaccinating your children, I think we need to be able to look at those things creatively.
Yeah, I mean, you're getting into the whole like free, the faith thing, like, I don't know what the federal guidelines would say about that, I don't know.
Yeah, that's more special. Yeah, free access to public education.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anyway, I am very interested, did you have one that you wanted? About, so a number of schools, school council, or student councils and the Ben Education Association have signed a climate change resolution. They wanna bring it to the, an upcoming board meeting. I'm not sure whether that's before or after your election at this point. And they want this, the Ben Lepine School Board to sign on to the climate change resolution. They know that this is just a resolution that doesn't really have any teeth except for, you know, as you said before, something of a cultural bellwether for the district. So I just would like to know whether you would support that as a board member.
I would. It's the elephant in the room, there's no question. Climate change is affecting everything. I mean, look at our February here, just as an example. The resolution, as you said, is really kind of a message, it's not an action, I mean, in that sense. I think more and more young people, particularly in the, at the high school levels, are becoming so aware that they are attacking the problems themselves, whether it's establishing clubs or whether it's doing things like gardening, or picking up garbage, or going along to the shoots and cleaning up its, its gathering steam, and I think the resolution is a step in the right direction.
Thanks.
I'll go along with that. I, it's, I don't even talk about the elephant in the room, it's the data that's everywhere that's happening. I saw, I saw a set of charts last night, because I don't always go back to look to see where the data came from, but usually I do. And it's just incredible, pictures of huge ice floes breaking off of Antarctica, I mean, this is just unbelievable, because it's still winter down there. And I would support a resolution, definitely. I would support, well, no, I wouldn't, but I would suggest moving perhaps to electric cars instead of gas, seriously. They are using propane, which is a little bit better than diesel.
I think the idea is that hope, by, you know, the students and some teachers hope that by adopting a resolution, then that would be something to take later to the district and say, hey, well, you said this, but look at, you know, the school lunches are still being, you know, there's trays being thrown away and, it's not as if there aren't any ramifications to it.
Yeah, yeah. So first, I support things that support our students and having a voice. And I'm excited about the work that students have done around gun violence, but also climate change. And I think that we're seeing that not just in Bend, but nationally. I'm a fan of the Environmental Center, and I've supported the Environmental Center for many years. I think that the climate change resolution can be powerful, and I think it's incredibly complex. And so in terms of some of the work that we do and where we actually could have the most impact quickest, I think that's gonna be nuanced. And so I do think, I do agree that it does have the ability to be a catalyst for change and like, hey, you said you're, you said you believe in this, but here's what we're doing. And then figuring out what we attack first. And so I use the example of recycling all the time here. But like, how much education are we actually doing with our population, with our kids in our lunchrooms, that actually enable us to compost and then separate recyclables correctly so that anyone will ever take them or they can be? We do a abysmal job of that in Bend. And so, you know, it's, there, there's so much education that has to be done, and it's like, what do you chip at? What do you chip at first? Do we chip at getting that lunchroom program in the recycling and compost in shape, which we probably could tackle? Or do we go straight towards, you know, renewable, renewable energy for all of our schools? That's great, that's a great stretch goal. But there's a lot of variations in between. And so I think a resolution can help us, I can support it, but, but I wanna be cognizant of all of the different steps that are gonna need to take place to actually realize results.
It almost makes sense to negotiate the reservation.
You know, I just, the other, the other example is, we talk about gun control and our kids, my daughter was on the front page of the Bulletin, right? Protesting at the Universalist Church Unitarian. We can talk, so our schools have done work, right? And we've created, we've fenced in our campuses, we've created vegetables mostly, right? We've got secure entries. But that's somewhat of an ink... But that's somewhat of an incomplete solution without other things, like mental health, and really thinking about the mental health of our youth. And so that's, I guess that's my example, it's like, there's these big things that we can spend a lot of money on, but there's all these other pieces that that, a lot of money isn't gonna make a difference unless we do all of these other pieces as well.
I have one other quick one, and I hope that each of you, and this is very complex again, but I hope that you can just give me sort of a yes or no, whether you support or not. The Ben Lepine School Board in, you know, in previous iterations has disallowed contraception on high school campuses, in the school health centers, and I would like to know whether you would support that as a board being brought in. So, for example, offering condoms in the school health center.
I'll start, yes, absolutely.
Yes, certainly.
Okay, thanks.
You asked that question two years ago, Dr. Young and I were sitting here.
Yeah.
That's where it started. We were very surprised about the, and I continue to be surprised because every school board, and even during the bond member that we asked that question to, was firmly in agreement, but it still remains something that is not available to students in our district. So hopefully it'll carry forth from here, regardless of who wins.
So, just a one-minute wrap-up, anything that we didn't cover that you really feel is important?
I'd like to jump in and just say, you asked early on, what's the board member responsibilities? One thing I would add is that as a board member, I want to listen more to our constituency. Case in point, you published a letter of mine to this effect. When North Star was named, that wasn't the name that the parents wanted. And to me, it was a lame answer from the board to say, "Well, if we name it after John Scott or Mary Simmons, ten years down the road, we may discover something in their past that could come and bite us." Well, I pointed out that North Star, scientists have said that the North Star is changing in its position. So if the North Star is changing in its position, isn't that the same analogy? Why name the school after something that's already changed from what it was twenty years ago? Anyway, that's my case.
Is that your final, is that your final thoughts for today?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It's actually changing at a glacial pace instead of a ten-year pace. I just, I'm proud to be here, I thank you very much. As an aside, if I had known about PERS in the mid-eighties, I'd have been here a long time ago. But I retired from Florida. It made nothing like this one. But it's, it's good, I, I, thank you for doing this.
Sure.
Thanks. Yeah, absolutely. I concur, I, and I think what you opened with really resonates with me, which is that I think we're really, I'm really excited that Zone Six has three people with education experience. And I think that that's a good thing for students and for parents of Ben Lepine, regardless of the outcome. And I still want to win, and I still want your endorsement. And I believe that the combination for me of being able to break my experience, both as a public educator and as a board member on different boards, including, I forgot to mention, Caskey School of Music here in Bend, where I was president for four years, and helped with the orchestra programs in the public schools as well as starting Kinder Music and Boys and Girls Club here. I'm passionate about bringing that experience, both from public education and board service to Ben Lepine, and I'm here for the long haul, because I've got a fourth grader in High Lakes. And so I have two, two children, and I think I appreciate that, that perspective. I think as a teacher and a principal, I always, I thought I learned, I knew a lot until I had my own kids in my school, and then I learned even more. And I think as a board member, that continues to be true, and that I can continue to be on my path of continuous improvement, just not just my two kids, but all the kids in Ben Lepine.
Awesome, thanks so much, guys.
Thank you.
I might have, you know, a couple of follow-ups, but I'll let you know. But otherwise, really appreciate you guys coming.